For this meeting to order, please stand for the invitation given by Officer.
Please join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, thou will be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done. And if this doesn't happen, give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. On the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Eric, you want to talk about the city-town wastewater Kings Plaza pump station?
The council president, member of councils, we have two items on a business agenda that we would like to see move, or on the conference agenda that we would like to see moved to tonight's business agenda. The first is the city-town wastewater agreement. There's a memo in here from city manager Tobalski in regards to a relationship that we would like to proceed with, with the town to increase capacity at the Kings Plaza pump station. And I'll turn it over to Brett Frank to talk more about that.
Yeah, so first of all, thank you. So basically what you've got, the town of Batavia was awarded a grant from the New York State Community Development Block Grant to upgrade the Kings Plaza pump station and make improvements to the existing water main that connects to the city sewer system. They are overcapacity right now. The pump station has a maximum capacity of .54 million gallons per day, and the town would like to plan for future growth at the pump station. In its all pumping, it can handle roughly a million gallons per day in sewer capacity. There's concern with their current exceedance of the contractual sewer limits and the full capacity of the plant, and believe we should not yet approve a capacity of 1 million gallons per day. This agreement will address these concerns and proposes modifications to ensure that the town adheres to their current capacity flows of .54 NGD. These modifications include smaller impellers rated at the same capacity as the existing pumps, and the ability for the city to monitor flows from the pump station in real time. The agreement also has the town and city mutually agreeing to have the town install meters at the four pump stations to monitor flows for billing purposes. If the capacity limit of .54 million gallons per day average daily flow is exceeded at the pump station, daily penalties will be levied by the city. Third thing is, a new 12-inch force main will be installed from Kings Plaza pump station to River and South Main Streets, and the city has the ability to inspect that project. We will continue to negotiate with the town on their future capacity purchase, and we are preparing to engage engineering services to study the potential to expand our treatment capacity at the wastewater treatment plant. That would be at the cost of the town of Batavia to do so. So the recommendation to city council would be to pass this resolution and authorize the city manager to execute the New York State DEC BSP 5 form, so that the town can complete the Kings Plaza pump station and force main project.
So what you're saying is, we want to let them complete the project, but downsize it for now with different impellers and whatnot, so that it's not exceeding required allowable that they're using now?
So we're still going to allow them to put in the bigger pump, just because engineering-wise, it wouldn't make sense to put in a smaller pump, go back in a later time and put in the correct-sized pump? We're going to allow them to put in the correct-sized pump, but mechanically limit those flows, while also having constant monitoring of the flow, so.
And if in the future they want, you know, we can expand it, it's a matter of upgrade versus a total rain stop?
It's changing out those impellers, simple as that, yep.
Yeah, is there anything in there where we can actually stop them when, if they exceed the limit, and we can just stop them from putting any more?
Yes.
Because I don't care about the fines as much. I don't want to end up in a situation like we had here a year ago with another person discharging, another organization discharging a high rate of sewage, because we don't know what the DEC is going to do a year down the road either, so. And it's in the agree, and the.
Okay, thank you. Are you looking for a mechanical shut-off, or just?
Whatever the city has.
It's going to be limited to that contract work.
Right, but I mean.
And what happens is, it'll be cut off there, and then it'll just start to fill their wet well.
Okay.
That's how that.
So we would use an agreement to force them to turn it off, or could we flick a switch and like cut off?
The city code provides the city with the authority to do that if it determines it's unsafe.
So we'll send a crew over there and they can?
And just to be clear, I mean, we do have in this agreement the ability to, you know, have penalties on them for going over that, which it's in there, but we haven't stipulated what those penalties would be.
And I agree with Bob that sometimes they find it's cheaper to exceed and pay the penalty, and that's not solving our problem, and they're getting away cheap to cause a problem for us, so that's, I agree with, making sure that we don't, I'd rather not see the penalties, I'd rather see the flow not increase.
Yep.
So, anyone else?
I know, so I can see, you know, if development continues, that they'd have to put in some sort of a treatment area of their own possibly.
Well, and that was kind of the fifth point, that we're actually engaging in those engineering services to potentially expand the wastewater treatment plant, and that would all be at the cost of the town of Batavia to do those engineering services.
Right, I read that, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Everyone understand what we're talking about here? There's a lot, this kind of transpired. Okay, so are we in consensus to move into tonight's business?
Yes.
Next one is the Creek Park?
Yeah, so the second one of the special conference meeting is a license agreement with the Batavia Development Corp. to move forward with our Creek Park purchasing, and they are asking for an access line agreement for the Creek Park. And in a nutshell, the easiest thing, and George, feel free to jump in or tammy as I say this, part of the Creek Park property that were, that the BDC and subsequently the city is trying to get from, take over, take over is not the best word, but from, from the Creek Park LLC, there's a sliver of it, right as you pull into the parking lot of the ice rink, that is technically their property, and they're looking for a license agreement, if I said that right.
Yeah, right now the town owns that property. They acquired it in connection with build-out of the trail, and the BDC entity is in the process of acquiring it from the town. As they did their search and survey, the survey identified the encroachment. So typical procedure for real estate is to do a license agreement to allow the encroachment onto the adjoining property that you have identified through the survey and update process. So that's basically what this license agreement would do, is account for the fact that there is an encroachment of the city's parking lot onto that property, and one smaller encroachment to the back of the property, onto that property as well, and provide for typical terms and conditions under the license agreement for the city to use that.
Any questions?
Yeah, if we didn't have to, if, let's say they want to do something with that property, that little sliver, and we can't use it, that shouldn't hurt our entrance to the parking lot anyways, should it?
I don't know exactly where the rows are.
Pardon me?
I don't know exactly where the rows are in conjunction to the license that I prefer to Brett or Eric for that, but the idea with this is that we would have the right to continue to use it as it exists, now that the survey has identified that encumbrance or encroachment, and it's just providing for the rights of the parties moving forward, so that use can continue with protection and indemnity insurance, typical requirements that would exist under a license agreement.
I don't believe it would, based on the drawings that were provided with. I don't believe that it would actually inhibit us from getting into the parking lot and using the parking lot. It's just part of the southeast corner of it.
Right, because what, I can see the day where we're going to have to increase our parking lot size back there. According to your drawing, there's still plenty of room that we could put more parking area in, because the ice rink, they're doing so many events now, they're getting quite busy.
I don't, I don't see us necessarily doing that, as that's part of the existing lot to begin with, I think.
Isn't that area mostly used for parking? Not only the driveway, it's more, if you look at it, the natural terrain looks like an area that goes along the hedgerow there, and in reality, part of that cleaned-off area is not ours, and it looks like it is part of the rink.
You would never know if you drove into the parking lot whose property it was, it's part of the.
Yeah, if you looked at the parking lot, you'd assume that the line was drawn in a different spot.
Maybe I'm confused. I thought we were just discussing this one little wedge.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's like a parking area, it's not really the driveway, it's to the left of the driveway.
The entrance is to the, if you're looking at the picture, it's to the right of the picture.
Correct, correct. As I said, if they, if something did come up, it got tied up, they had to dig it up or anything, it wouldn't interfere with us anyway.
So it'd be minimal, but it would take a few parking spots.
I don't see any reason why they would need to do anything with that, being the size of it anyways.
It's more, it's more housekeeping, go ahead.
Are there any current fees with the licensing?
No. Basically just providing for the right to use that property. Well, there are insurance requirements similar to what we would request if we're granting a license or granting an easement, but the city insurance covers those requirements. Our existing insurance has no additional coverage required.
Pretty much no cost to the city, it's more of a cleaning up of a right-of-way kind of thing.
Again, if the survey hadn't been done in connection with the acquisition of the property from the town, it wouldn't even have. It happens fairly frequently in real estate transactions.
Yeah, well, you can see that it's kind of pieced together anyway, and it's almost, you can see where someone just cleared it off and didn't realize where the line was, and it looks like it's part of one thing, and it's actually not, so it's good that we clean it up before any development happens there. It's nice to have it all picked up beforehand, I think. Anyone else want to, questions, or, so are we in consensus to move into tonight's business? Motion to adjourn. Mr. Beely. Seconded by Mr. Richman. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely.
Yes.
Twitchell.
Yes.
Canaly.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Schmidt.
Richmond.
Yes.
Byakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski.
Yes. And now a call to order the regular business meeting. Public comments? All speakers should have signed up in advance for the city board. Please use the podium, state your name and address before beginning your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. On the first bell, you need to wrap it up, because on the second bell, I'm going to have to stop you, so that we can continue on with the meeting.
John Roach.
John Roach, 16th Avenue Terrace, Batavia. I had a question about the property that you were just talking about with the lease and all. The city created the BDC, and now the BDC created a limited liability company for this piece of land, and now you're going to have to sign a lease and insurance. Should somebody end up, for whatever reason, getting hurt on that land, who's responsible? If there's a lawsuit, is it that LLC, and could they cover, or is it the BDC? Or in the long run, is it the city of Batavia, since the city's created the BDC? Not likely to happen, but I was kind of curious, how does this work? Because now it's three, four different entities tied into this sort of piece of property, and I wanted to make sure the liability insurance, that's not something that was already covered under the city's policy, but at least now it's not extra money. I also wanted to say I support the idea of the residency waiver for the fire chief and some of the key word warrior, what are you crying about? The chief getting a city vehicle to use for city purposes, I thought was uncalled-for. It's part of the employment package, just like a lot of other people. You get, you sign a contract, you get a salary, you get healthcare maybe, and other benefits, so, thank you.
James Simons.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is James Simons, 116 Ross Street, here in Batavia. This is going to be like an address as a concerned citizen. I'm from Genesee County, I've been a resident for nearly a decade. This is the first time you guys have seen or heard of me as a concerned citizen. In 2021, I had mental health arrests, I believe a lot of you recall the incident at JFK on my dairy school, that was me. I'm obviously recovered since then, and I'm doing well, and I just wanted to address some of my concerns, my vision for Batavia, and my involvement going forward. I know a lot of this is working with my councilman, Mr. Twitchell, out of the second ward, but I'm glad that everybody is here and able to listen and hear my experience. So I was born in Livingston County, or, excuse me, Wyoming County, Warsaw Hospital, educated in Wyoming and Livingston County, and then went to college in Monroe County, where I've done a number of sports and volunteer activities that I have available to question upon. My concern is for the people with mental health disorders and disabilities in our city limits and in our county in general. I have, since the passing of my father in March of 2020, I've had three mental health-related arrests. They've materialized into felony charges against me, and I pled guilty and will plead guilty to misdemeanors, but that's handled by Mr. Roach in the public defender's office. My vision for Batavia, kind of what I really want to talk about, is cleaning up our neighborhoods. I know downtown in the business district that brings in a lot of money, gets maintained for tourism and stuff like that, but as someone who's walked the streets in the day and night of Batavia, or multiple districts or wards, I think there's room for improvement in terms of the imagery we show our children and our future. Last week alone, I picked up empty booze bottles, empty beer cans, just doing my own recycling, and I just want to know what the city is doing in terms of cleaning up and making our neighborhoods look better, and not just for the tourists. So like I said, I will work with Mr. Twitchell with that in the future, and, I'm sorry, I don't know why you see, hey, but, as a historian, I don't like buildings being turned into parking lots, so that's all I'll say on that, but, is there a county historian or something like that? Okay, okay, I've worked with them in documenting the history of that building, because it's significant to me, and so I have worked out there, attended meetings there, and it's spiritually significant to me. Thank you for your time, and I hope to speak with someone in the future. Thank you.
Council responds to public comments? Eric, did you feel you need to clarify the Creek Park and who owns what over there?
Well, the BDC was created by the city, but it's a separate entity. It's the Batavia Development Corporation, which is a local development corporation under New York State law. Local development corporations can and do set up separate entities to own and develop property. That's the reason that the BDC has done that through its own board and through its own devices. Without getting into particulars and opining about particular liability issues, like I said, the agreement spells out the responsibilities of the parties. Basically, it makes the user of the licensed premises responsible for accidents and events that occur there, should they come back to that licensed premises. And again, the insurance requirements are required, but they are consistent with what the city's insurance already is, so there's no additional insurance coverage that will be required for that. And I would say basically that that's similar to what we would ask for from a party that comes to the city, or another property owner has to use our property, which is insurance indemnity protection, making sure that the proper protections are in place to use property or to be granted a license or granted an easement. It's fairly standard.
Okay, and would you want to maybe explain about all the efforts we're putting in the neighborhood cleanup this year, whether code enforcement, additional staffing, and all that?
I can let Brett talk about the staffing of the code enforcement office, because we did, we did add some staffing over the past year, and planning on bringing some more back for the summer.
Exactly, so we've got, right now we've got two full-time code enforcement officers, a, what was it, at one point, a part-time ordinance officer, split between DPW and split between, the police department is now a full-time ordinance officer in our position. June 5th, actually June 6th, I take that back, Tuesday, we will have a part-time ordinance officer coming back from the summertime as well, which will be a three-month position. And I think you'll see in your council updates, year-to-date, I think we're more than double the number of violations and citations that have been given out to property owners over last year. I think it's over 200 this year compared to roughly 84 from last year. So they're out and about trying to clean things up.
And that does take some time to go through the process to allow them to fix it quote without penalty, and then if they, but they don't, then it goes to court, and then there's other enforcement.
Exactly. This time of year, you know, you've got citations that took place, you know, February, March, and you've got to give people adequate time to say, okay, you've got peeling paint, but we don't expect people to go out, you know, mid-April if it's raining 32 degrees out and go paint their house. So, yeah, we do follow up on that, but we do give people, you know, an adequate timeline to, you know, get those repairs done.
I mean, the rainy May we've had, it sounded like lawn mowers were going since daybreak until I came here in my neighborhood. Everyone's trying to get their lawnmower, because it was just impossible, so.
And we're, and we're actually bringing back the same part-time ordinance officers last year. He stopped in, I believe it was last Thursday, so he's already got properties that he's watching, and he doesn't start for another month, so he's already keeping an eye on it.
So he's already experienced.
He's already, he's ready to go. He came late.
So, and we, you know, council put some effort into this last year, as we got construction and things going. The next phase of the city cleanup was to start working on the neighborhoods, and this, this is the summer, we're going to do it. So I'm glad to hear we're already way ahead of the game on it, and we'll see how it plays out by the end of the summer, how the result, what we get out of it, so.
Right. I appreciate all the efforts, because every time I call code enforcement, with a concern with, with a citizen like this gentleman came forward, they were right there and they took care of it.
You know, I will, I will pass that along, you know, they.
And I've seen him out on patrol, you know, several times a day in different neighborhoods as I'm passing through, and so I know he's out there, he's not just in the office, he's out there, you know, looking and trying to solve these problems, so that's a good start.
Yes, definitely agree.
It's also good, like with Mr. Roach here, when he comes to speak, that he appreciates the efforts that our, that our firemen and policemen are doing in the city, rather than bad-mouthing them on the internet, anonymously, of course, they.
Not all of them are anonymous, they just. So thank you for the update, and hopefully that answers a few questions. Anyone else want to add in on that?
Yeah, I think the one thing we all need to do, everyone here, is just promote more community spirit. We have some landlords in Batavia that are absolutely horrible. I know what you're going through, they're horrible to deal with, they won't take care of their properties, they wait to serve as summons, and a month later, they say, well, I didn't quite understand that, or I can't get to it, they can stall for six and eight months. I had a complaint around the corner from where I live, there was a mattress in Box Springs, sat on the curb on Main Street for eight or nine days, and, you know, it's just the reaction, and it looks so poor, you know, I mean, we're all trying to clean up the community, and here you drive down Main Street, welcome to Batavia, we throw our stuff out on the sidewalk, and, and there's, there's a lot of problems in that area, and code is doing, you know, a really good job, and their hands are tied with some of those things, and legally, there's only so much they can do, but we, we all need to try getting the word out and try improving things. Thank you.
Communications?
Brighton Securities is looking to hold their annual shred day on Friday, May 26, from 12 to 2 p.m. This will be at 212 East Main Street. It's free document destruction and disposal day for the public.
Any questions or concerns on that?
Ever Present Church has requested to hold a carnival on Saturday, June 10th, 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. in their parking lot outside of the church with games, food, and vendors.
Any questions or concerns on that? The next?
The bid has requested to have their cider walk, excuse me, on Saturday, June 17th, 4 to 8 p.m. at the downtown businesses, this is similar to the wine walk.
Any questions or concerns on that? All right, and the next?
Bid also has requested to have a concert series, these are various dates, Thursdays and Fridays in July and August, at Jackson Square from 7 to 9 p.m.
Any concerns? Okay, and the next?
The last one is also the bid for their boxcar derby on Saturday, August 26th, from 8 a.m. to 1 p.m. on Eloquent Ave.
Any questions or concerns on that?
No, but I'll, I'll make a comment, that if you didn't get a chance to see last year's inaugural race, go down there. It's a hoop, it really is. I took my dog for a walk, and I was just expecting to go down there for maybe 10, 15 minutes just to check it out, because I live across the street from, from the bid director, and so I saw them doing all the car stuff across the street, so my curiosity killed me, so I went down there, I ended up spending the entire morning there. I didn't want to leave, it was so much fun to watch, and so it's a great event. If you didn't get a chance last year, make sure you do this year, so.
Yeah, I volunteered and worked there a couple hours last year, and the first thing in the morning helping them, and it was great to see the young people enjoying cars and stuff. But I do have a question, who sets up the barriers for this? They close the streets and there's barriers set up?
They're usually set out for the organizers to close out the streets themselves, so the workers set them out usually the day before, and then the organizers will put them out.
Right, I thought, I remember that, you know, we put them up like a stair, but I couldn't remember. Okay, thank you.
They usually deliver them on a corner somewhere near the intersections or whatever, and that, in a pile, and then you just, the event themselves will put them where they need them. Any other questions? Okay. The next city council meeting will be held Monday, May 22nd, 2:00 to 23:00, 7 p.m. City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. You've all been to give a copy, given a copy of the March 2023 financials? If you had a chance to look them over, are there any questions or concerns on those? Okay, so are we in consensus to approve the March 2023 financials?
Yes.
Okay, so they're approved. You've been given a copy of the April 2023 minutes? Any questions, concerns, omissions, corrections? So are we in consensus to approve the April 23 minutes?
Yes.
Item number 44, 2023, the council member of committee appointments, Mr. Beely. 45, 2023, reappointing the bid improvement member, Ms. Schmidt. 46, 2023, the 11th City Center, Mr. Richmond. 47, 23, waiver for the fire chief, Mr. McGinnis. Number 48, 2023, the elusive surplus police vehicle, Ms. Briggs. I teased the chief.
We all just go at this time.
It's a cop thing, it's a cop thing, you can't help it. 49, 2023, the modifications to the King Plaza pump station, Mr. Canaly. And 50, 23, the license agreement with Creek Park, Mr. Byakowski. City attorneys report?
Yes, I've got this to serve, can put out this now.
Okay. City managers report?
Yes, of course, Rachel is off on vacation. She did provide you with a council update last week. Just to highlight a couple things on there, employees right now are in the process of completing year-end reviews for all their staff. In addition to reviewing the year-end, we're putting a large focus on development and going forward and improving, not only what they're doing, but as well as how they're doing it, so we're all going through that. The police facility is at 95%, we're getting close to be able to bid the project for construction. USDA is working to finalize a letter of commitment for the project, we hope to have that finalized within a week. That's actually going to be really big for us, because if you're paying attention to what interest rates are doing, the fact we can lock into that USDA rate is going to make it a little more affordable for us. As well as, the last thing I'll talk about is Jackson Square redesign is nearing completion as well, we hope to have that off the bid in June.
Any questions? Any questions? Okay, committee reports?
Yeah, I've too attended the EDC annual meeting, it was quite interesting, and Mr. Hyde explained all the things he's up against and all the things going on, and they had a couple excellent speakers, and it was very well-attended, I think there were like 255 people in attendance, so it didn't get over till about 2 o'clock. The parade, Memorial Day Parade's moving right along. One of the problems we're having is people aren't responding very rapidly, it's, you know, while we're going to be there, but we're, we have to have a meeting, we have to do this. Actually, any council members that want to attend should respond to me also, and if you need a ride, let me know, because I do, I will be arranging some vehicles for people, so if, if any council members would like to be in the parade and want a ride, please let me know. That's pretty much it, thank you.
I'll be riding, I'll be there.
I know.
I just wanted to make sure you knew, unless it mechanically breaks down.
Mr. President, be careful. I haven't had my bike out yet either, reading the papers, it's not looking good.
The weather has been not conducive to any actions. Any unfinished business? So, Resolution 24, 2023, Mr. Beely.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution approving appointment to council member Bayakowski in Richmond of the Art Committee.
Second to by, Mr. Briggs. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely.
Yes.
Twitchell.
Yes.
Canaly.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Richmond.
Yes.
Bayakowski.
I'm seeing.
Jankowski.
Yes. And Resolution 45, 2023, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution reappointing Patty Pacino to the Batavia Business Improvement District Board.
Second, Mr. Beely. Questions or concerns?
Can I just, I, I'm very, very happy that Patty wants to stay involved in that. She was always a real, a real activist as far as getting us information from, from the bid meetings and things like that. Do we know how often we'll be able to hear about various different things from Patty? Is she planning on, I mean?
She said whenever she has news to report, she'll show up at a council meeting and then take the podium and then fill us in.
Perfect, yeah.
And, and the bylaws allow, it doesn't have to be a council member.
Right, right, yeah, because she did such a good job, and I'm glad that she's.
Yeah, we looked it up to make sure that it didn't have to be a council member, it's just anyone council wants to appoint.
Any appointment, sure.
Right. So she'll be here several times. A year or two.
I figured she would be, I just, I didn't know what our arrangements were with her.
That's, that's the way she left it with me. Anyone else? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Richmond.
Yes.
Bayakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski.
Yes.
Beely.
Yes.
Twitchell.
Yes.
Canaly.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Resolution 46, 2023, Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution approving the purchase and sale agreement of 11 City Center.
Second to by, Mr. Canaly. Questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond.
Yes.
Bayakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski.
Yes.
Beely.
Yes.
Twitchell.
Yes.
Canaly.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Resolution 47, 2023, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution approving the residency waiver for the, for the fire chief.
Second to by, Mr. Beely. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Richmond.
Yes.
Bayakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski.
Yes.
Beely.
Yes.
Twitchell.
Yes.
Canaly.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Richmond.
Yes.
Bayakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski.
Yes.
Beely.
Yes.
Twitchell.
Yes.
Canaly.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Resolution 49, 2023, Mr. Canaly, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to approve the town of Batavia's modifications of the King's Plaza pump station project, and to authorize the city manager to execute the NYSDEC BSP-54.
Second to by, Ms. Schmidt. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canaly.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Richmond.
Yes.
Bayakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski.
Yes.
Beely.
Yes.
Twitchell.
Yes. And Resolution 50, 2023, Mr. Bayakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to approve an access license agreement with Creek Park Batavia LLC.
Second to by, Ms. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bayakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski.
Yes.
Beely.
Yes.
Twitchell.
Yes.
Canaly.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Richmond.
Yes.
Mr. Beely, we should take that and do a record session.
Thank you, Council President. Whereas Article 7, Section 105, 1D of the Public Officers' Law permits the legislative body of a municipality entering the executive session to discuss proposed, pending, or current litigation, whereas Article 7, Section 105, 1H of the Public Officers' Law permits the legislative body of a municipality entering the executive session to discuss proposed acquisitions, sale, or lease of real property, or proposed acquisition of securities or sale or exchange securities held by such public body, but only one publicly with such as to the fact of the value thereof. Whereas Article 7, Section 105, 1F of the Public Officers' Law permits the legislative body of a municipality parent to executive session to discuss medical, financial credit or employment history of particular person or corporation or matters leading to the employment, employment, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of particular person or corporation. Now there be it resolved by the House of the City of Batavia, and upon approval of this motion, the city council does hereby enter into executive session.
Do we really have to read that whole thing?
You're enjoying it.
I mean, is it necessary to read the? Maybe there are water.